To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, David.
Morning.
Call the meeting door or approve the agenda.
So moved.
Hi, Ken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
Motion to approve minutes from five, six, seven, nineteen, the five.
Um, I have the very last one, moved by Lee and second by Underbird. That should be...
You're moving again?
Moving again. I think that should be lonely.
Yeah.
I missed that one. I guess I got it.
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
With Dave's correction.
I'll second.
Okay, there was a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. General public, not beating down the doors, that's good. Ben, you're up.
One.
The only official thing I've got on the agenda today is to approve an application to Workin County right away to Phil Hendrickson for dust control. For whichever reason, he prefers Dino's out of Mason City as opposed to Pro. Uh, Dino's does the calcium chloride instead of the... ...that everyone else uses. So, um, they did it last year. There was no adverse effects last year, so I don't see a problem with it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Workin right away for Phil Hendrickson for Dino's dust control.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
They're gonna do the same, they'll let you know when they're coming so you can have it bladed and we don't get in trouble with him.
The problem, the problem with the chloride is it's clear. It's not as simple for our, for our blade operator. I mean, they have to remember where all the locations are or stick flags in the shoulder and then they remember it and they'll remember it. Or they'll drive through and say, hey, what was that flag for?
Right.
We trade on the flags, right?
Yes, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Anything else?
Uh, just to give you guys an update, uh, last Friday, we started paving on the Bo to Rutland stretch. Uh, we got a strong mile and quarter to mile and a half done on Friday. Blacktop Service did all of their asphalting on the Hardy Road, so once shouldering gets completed on the Hardy Road, we'll have that back open to traffic. We are corning out two patch locations down by Seaver's Griffith and a mile south of Thor. Blacktop Service is planning on doing the patching there today and the three hundred foot of asphalt that they've got in the city limits of Bo tomorrow. Um, other than that, we're hoping for good weather this week and we can start hauling some rock and shaping up our gravel roads.
Okay.
I got a couple where I need you to have them take a look at over on Two Hundred and Fifth, uh, being west of the Rutland Flats. Um, it's really rutted up over in there. Um, also Two Hundred and Fortyth, which would be miles south of the high school Blacktop, uh, south of Lloyd Gaddell's down there. It's really, I was out hunting asparagus yesterday and it was a mess. And down on Iowa Avenue.
How'd it go?
Asparagus, I don't want to go on record and say, but the asparagus is hot. If you like asparagus, oh my god, it's...
Now's the time to go.
Good asparagus water, huh?
It is. The stuff is really coming through.
It must have. I looked about, uh, four days ago, it was about this tall.
Yeah. Down on Iowa would be right south of, uh, Les Aiken.
So there's a lot of asparagus on Iowa, is what you're telling us.
Uh, Les, yeah, John. Juniper.
Juniper, not, uh, I'm sorry, Iowa and Juniper, both those.
They're called Iowa and Juniper.
Well, they were, the county was over there Friday, but, uh, Juniper is where the ruts are, I'm sorry, I wrote it the wrong.
Juniper, uh, west of...
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have a look at it. Um, I know most of our crew is working on corning out the, the rock right now and I guess as soon as we get the rock poured out, we'll...
Get our chance, that would be great.
We'll get our chance, yeah. We'll get our blades out and get some rock hauling. Uh, last Thursday, we did hit a power pole by Peggy's house with the motor patrol. No damage was sustained to the machine, but we were trying to avoid the frost oil out in front of Peggy's place and the edge of the wing, or the edge of the mow board caught the pole and ended up snapping about ten feet up, so...
Unfortunate.
Yeah.
Got the pole replaced, I'm sure.
Yep, Mid-American was there about five, five thirty putting the pole in.
Never happens at ten in the morning.
Never, no. Towards the end of the day, I don't know, we're in a little bit better.
Why didn't you just hand Peggy a candle when she went into the house?
I was sure she didn't have any power when she got home Thursday anyway.
No, Russ called me in a panic because we were getting water in the basement.
Oh.
The sump pump didn't work, so we had a friend who had a generator, thank goodness.
Oh.
So I went out and told the guys, if the truck comes down, please let him in because he's got a generator for us. So we got a little backup and everything was fine. But the water was right at the top of the sump hole by the time he got the generator hooked up.
Makes it very nervous.
So it's ready to just be worse.
Quite a battle with that, aren't you?
We have this here, but Russ, I think, finally has it. He went out and figured out where the, where it was plugged.
Oh, good.
He connected some tubing together and kept getting it longer and longer and then all of a sudden the water started rushing out, so...
Oh, he's gaming on his water problem.
Yeah, just a bunch of mud and junk in there, so...
Other than that...
I gotta keep the sun shining and...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Be great for everything, everything.
Yeah.
Awesome. Hopefully, once we, and I know the road, like Bruce just said, been a catastrophe, you know, and you're getting them repaired, but when they're grading them, they don't neglect the crowding on the road when they are getting them put back into shape.
Right.
Because there's some that decent shape, actually, for the road, you know, this isn't the rutted up, torn up ones, ones that they, you know, haven't sustained it where they've been upgrading and getting them back in shape, which is a good thing, but I know if a lot of places, we lack crowding spots.
Well, some of that, some of that...
And I know it's been deep down over the back, you know, it's been deep down over the winter, too, but, you know...
I mean, at, at this point, we're, we're basically dragging pebbles around because we haven't put any fresh rock on there.
And then when you get it...
So our crown gets built when we start hauling around.
Yep.
So your email that you had posted or gave us, shared last week with all the other counties that are, that isn't Humboldt County...
No, it isn't.
The whole state.
Yeah, I think we're more fortunate than others just because most of our roads are all limestone, limestone.
Well, we're gonna look back into the best condition and we'll still be the envy of the state for the best condition of our roads.
We'll be, we'll be chasing our tail most of the summer trying to catch up, basically. We're a month and a half behind right now just because of the spring that we've had.
Well, I guess we do what we do.
Yep.
On an unrelated road matter, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but you mentioned the boring of, you know, under a road to, you know, put in a drainage system.
Mm-hmm.
What did we come up with or...
We probably have to redo, this is for, uh, Mr. Trask's boring location that we approved last year.
But we, we reconfigured if the person didn't want to bore under a hard surface road, we'd...
We'd pay the five thousand dollars.
Yeah, change it from fifteen hundred.
Would pay up to five thousand for the county, for the boring.
For the boring.
Would pay up to five thousand if they bore it.
Right.
Because we figured the savings over cutting up the road and the patching and all that headache.
Coming back.
So at the five thousand dollar, and if you go the old route of just digging through the road is what?
Fifteen hundred.
Even on a hard surface road.
We'd prefer not digging through the road on a hard surface road.
Well, I think, I remember that good discussion that we had on upping it to five thousand, I would still highly encourage, you know, that, we made a concession to put more money towards that.
Right.
Because it was in the favor of the road.
Right.
That we strongly suggest that they maintain the boring and take the five thousand and bore underneath the road.
And if, if that's the position of the board, I can relay that back to Mr. Trask.
Well, I think the only thing that we ever, we never get that road back to the way it was, because you're always gonna have that.
Yep.
We never get that straight again. It's always, and I guess with the boring, you...
And we made that...
To get boring, you should eliminate the dip.
Right.
Yeah.
But when you dig, you can't...
When, when you dig, you, you close the road to do the dig and then, like we're doing today, you re-close the road to dig the rock out and then patch it.
And like you said, Bruce, we, we're all familiar with those patches and then you kind of deal with them. You know, it's always that...
I mean, if they, if, if they open cut Vernon School Road, my, my suggestion would be to leave it as gravel for a year, let it go through a winter, let the truck traffic beat it down. It seems that we've had better luck with the patches than we would to...
We're sure you get more, but on the flip side, like I said, we had real good discussion on up in the, you know, county, well, we contributed, the county contribution to boring, and I think with that, I think it's fair to just say, you know, proceed with your boring. You have the five thousand, we bumped it up from fifteen hundred, we gave it a special classification.
Yeah.
And I just think that that's the, the position we should take on a hard surface road, just because of all the things we just discussed, which are definitely favorable to boring versus cutting through an asphalt road.
Oh, yeah. Boring is way more beneficial.
And we're giving them some cost share.
Right. And I have no idea what, uh, what the costs of boring have gone up, uh...
I don't either.
At one time, you were covering basically half the cost.
Right. So, there you go. I, that's just my suggestion, I would, I would strongly push them in the direction of boring under hard surface roads.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that, for all reasons discussed, it's just a better program. You know, cutting through a gravel or secondary road is a little different.
Right.
You can work with it, but you just cause a lot of headache when you start cutting through hard surface roads, so...
See where we go?
Close to intersection, too, isn't it?
Uh, if I remember right, it's eight hundred feet west of seventeen.
Seventeen.
That's what it's on.
All right, good luck.
All right, sounds good.
Everything documented on that pole?
What's that?
Everything documented on the pole?
As far as...
Like we talked about.
Uh, I had a conversation with the, with the operator and told him that he'd be getting copies in fan mail and, you know, did one with...
Did make sure it's all documented.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Moving on to claims.
I had, uh, one hundred and ninety oh nine point one nine and sixteen thousand oh sixty five twenty-five is what I came up with. Is those numbers right?
That's what I had also.
I would make a motion.
I'll start with that.
What'd you do if that one you took off with?
Yeah.
Oh, I think she still has it in there.
Did you get your question answered?
I did.
Okay.
It, it doesn't show that the payment showed up, but...
I don't...
If she's adding, I should go back and ask her. She was adding up the invoices to see if it jived with the, uh, total.
It seemed an awful lot, paid thirteen hundred last year, last month and twenty something this month.
So you were, the question was, is whether the bill paid?
Yeah. Yeah, it looked like it ran through it and then it didn't get...
Uh, got carried over.
Yeah, yeah.
It was extreme.
Double jacket.
Sorry, we were getting a lot of contact from in there. The chatter was coming through.
The payment was on there.
Okay.
So those were just that month's charges.
Okay.
Nine months, unmarked, that was a ton top.
Wasn't that, that one?
Yeah, go find it out.
One dog was eleven hundred and seventy dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Then it owed them an amount of money.
Yeah, so we had, we need to have a conversation as to what it was for an ACL injury on a dog.
Do you need my hearing notes?
That's the question I have.
Rick is correct, we need to have some discussion on the, on the medical expenses covered, vet bills covered.
Yeah.
Procedures covered.
I agree.
Okay, any other discussion on the claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Prove transfer to secondary roads from the following, general basic, thirty-nine four seventy-one, rural, four ninety-three, three fifty, rural service loss, two seventy-five, zero, zero, zero.
So these are just normal...
Yes, this will be our final transfers from general basic to secondary roads first, um, what we budgeted, and the same thing from rural services to secondary roads, and then Ben requested, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand from his secondary lost fund to go into secondary road, and he had budgeted that also, so that's that whole amount. So that gets us all caught up on all of our transfers through the end of this fiscal year.
Nothing out of the ordinary, that we're not expecting?
Uh-uh, nothing out of the ordinary.
I'd make a motion to approve, can we do a little one more sum?
You sure can.
The transfers to secondary roads from general basic, rural services and rural services, uh, lost funds.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? About, all in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
You know, the lost funds, just kind of, when you have two hundred and seventy-five thousand, just lost.
Yeah, it sounds funny.
It is, it is. So I go with...
To clarify, it's local option sounds better.
Yes, I know, but...
It will make us lost.
I did, I was like, oh, I know.
Say you misplaced that pile on death. My dad, he would do that, it's that easy to do.
I might lose some other stuff, but I wouldn't lose mine.
No.
Discussion and action on Gilmore City, Red Gate Community School. They're requesting another five thousand dollars for the next five years, was it? Three years.
Three.
I did call Pocahontas and talk to them, and they do not.
They do not.
They denied, they were asked and they denied, um, giving them any money.
Okay.
If I remember right, we gave them some money a few years back for some playground equipment or something, wasn't that what it was for?
Given twenty-five hundred in, uh, two thousand eighteen.
You did a one-time?
Just a one-time, I don't know what it was for, like playground equipment or something like that.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly what.
It wasn't like, uh, it was supposed to be for some...
Did they, whether they've gotten, tried to get some grants or anything, because I know there are, there are grants that they can file for to get...
I don't know, all I know is what's on the...
What's on the sheet? Okay, I was just curious. Excuse me.
This is not currently in our budget right now.
No. And it looks to me like they're asking for a five thousand dollar quarterly donation.
It looks quarterly, that's what it says on here, quarterly.
So that would be twenty thousand a year.
Do we have a five thousand dollar quarterly donation relating to this kitty cat's daycare?
I don't remember the exact amount, I can look it up, but we do have that.
There's a, I think it's twenty-two, isn't it twenty-two thousand a year is what we, there's two different loans.
Well, no, I'm talking not that, just the donation thing.
I don't...
I don't think we have that.
Okay, then it's just the loan thing.
I think it was for the building.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So we are on the hook for that, no doubt, but the, I'm, I'm, don't know whether, I'm confused on the quarterly donation thing. Um, I think Rick mentioned the twenty-five hundred dollars, to me was a, I don't know if you should equate it to the library, you know, we give them X money. Uh, I think that's what they were referring to in the eighteen fiscal year. Um, and honestly, I know, if I got a little scuttlebutt information, I think they made a mistake of not coming and going through the budget and asking for like the twenty-five hundred dollars. So, I mean, I could see that if it's, you could look back and see what was funded the previous year, but I, and then if you read this letter, if you would like us to come to re-explain our request, we'd be happy to do so, because I don't understand the five thousand dollar quarterly one. I think I understand the twenty-five hundred dollars towards that, and I'd be agreeable to that, but I do not understand the, I guess you can request it, but I don't quite understand it. So I, I can understand the twenty-five hundred.
I feel that Pocahontas don't donate to these, and their request, they should be self-sustainable. I mean, we don't mind getting them started like the kitty cats over here, but after they get going, they should be able to self-sustain. The county residents should not have to pay for your childcare. That's the way I feel about it. And since Pocahontas don't donate anything to them and that school sits in Pocahontas, I feel that we don't, uh, we don't give them. They've, they talked about that at budget time. Like I said, that's where I think they messed the budget.
I think the school sits in Humboldt County.
Is it, is it to, uh, east of...
Yeah, it is, it's on this side, anyway.
I think it is to the east of...
Yeah, it's on the east side.
Yeah.
I was thinking the other side, but, yeah, it's on the east side, down on D E Avenue.
Well, at what point, what are these numbers? I mean, they have a staff of twenty-seven serving almost a hundred and twenty kids full and part-time. At what point do these things, will they support themselves?
Yeah.
How much, how, what do we have over here? Are we, we aren't anywhere close to those numbers, are we?
No, we're not close to...
We don't have anywhere near twenty-seven employees.
No, we do not.
And I think that, I think that was the discussion when we were going through this, should we or shouldn't we donate to that, was, well, if we can get it started, then it is gonna support itself, wasn't that the idea?
Yeah.
And I think that when we got...
I think it does take several years before they do get to where they...
It does, it, it will take a good four or five, maybe even seven years before it really gets going, rolling good.
And the whole thing was, is if people don't have daycare, they aren't gonna be able to come to work for your trailer company or, uh, welding comp, whatever the company, Rhymers Trucking, uh, that fleet of trucks that we have, uh, whatever it is.
Trying to boost, boost county population, basically.
Yeah, so that was, that was the way that I went with it, and I guess, nothing against this, and I, I feel, but I, I'm just curious to know how you have a hundred and twenty full and part-time kids and at what point is their number sustained by, we don't need them to have that?
Well, it looks like they moved into that school building in fourteen, that's five years ago. Going on, coming up on five years. They should be self-sustained by now, I would think.
I think they would have been smart to come today.
Oh, I agree. I, I mean, when you look at the, I...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great that they said they're willing to come, but I think they should, if, since this was on the agenda, they should have came.
I agree a hundred percent that they, or if it's not sooner.
Mm-hmm.
But...
And if they, if they do decide it on the agenda, could we have our numbers that we're supporting some of them with?
Sure.
Because I, I know we guaranteed the loans and that's the majority of what we're...
Yeah.
Correct.
But is there an additional, forget that.
Yeah.
But is there an additional donation, contribution? Then, that, I think you...
The only thing there is, I don't remember, I don't think there was, the meeting, I don't think there is, but I'm not positive.
Somewhere along the line, I think potentially there was, and...
They might have requested it, but I don't remember, um, giving, I think, we did, we did, we guaranteed the loan.
I think that's a good idea to see, I agree, so makes sense to have the documentation, but...
Correct.
You know, we are countywide, like it or not, we are hugely subsidizing this kitty cat's daycare, and it is, we are on the hook on the guaranteed loan that got signed off on, so, I mean, I'd keep that separate, I like Rick's idea to see if there is a, whatever you wanna call it, contribution.
Yeah.
Other than that, to, just to really...
More of an operating cost.
That you give them, you know, X amount, and that, to me, would be the twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, is a little different deal. I'd use, they're not quite understand what the five thousand dollar quarterly donation comes from.
And what it's gonna be used for. I mean, are they using it to pay bills or are they using it to...
Well, they say here for curriculum, material, books, proposed play center, toys, equipment, technology and staff wages.
Sure.
See, that's the big thing, wages, and that's what kitty cat is struggling with, too, is, is wages to get people that will stay and be retainable, because if they'll start there, then they'll, you know, they're getting, some of them are getting nine bucks an hour.
You're gonna have to love kids to do that.
Yeah, some are starting at eight bucks an hour, you know, and then getting up to ten if you're a lead, you know, so that's the big thing, is, because a lot of your convenience stores and things like that are paying eleven, twelve dollars an hour.
That's habitual with daycares.
Correct, oh, yeah, correct.
Everywhere.
Yep, I'm just saying that when it says wages, that's, that's a huge issue for all the daycares.
I think it's fair to give them maybe a little more information, but, uh, you know, we do have two daycares in our county, and I don't think it's fair to overly fund one without absolutely nothing to the other, because that is a good viable daycare, it does, you know, gives people an option.
A lot of people use it.
A lot of people use it, and, you know, are open for good things out of the other one, but I, I just, I don't understand the five thousand dollar thing, and if you could look back in, by next week, does that make sense?
Yep.
I think more information would be good for everybody.
If they get on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll just, I'll make a motion to deny this currently, and, uh, do we have more information if needed?
If you read the very bottom line, please let us know, I would love to know.
I'll second.
How many kids is represented in Humboldt County and how many in Pocahontas County do they have?
I don't know. I don't know.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Okay, discussion action on board meetings the week of the twenty-seventh, Labor Day.
Should be Labor Memorial.
Yeah, that's the one, isn't it?
We just blew through Summers Affair.
I know, it's like, gee, we went so far.
Where'd it go?
I've got no idea if there's any, is there any claim?
I looked on Friday and there's nothing on there, so, unless something was added right away this morning.
We don't have claims.
No, don't have claims.
Make a motion to take that day off for Memorial Day.
I'll say, any other discussion?
And if something does come up, we can always meet if we have to.
Let us know.
No, I have to have this a twenty-four hour notice, right?
We can always meet on Tuesday, so...
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Got it down, no meeting. We'll change that to Memorial Day. We'll change that to Memorial Day.
Yes, I will.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that Labor Day too.
You're going to get ahead of the game, huh?
Way ahead of it.
Change date for the public hearing on Humboldt County budget amendment for eighteen nineteen.
Um, I got back to my desk after last week here approval and realized I didn't have enough time to get it in the paper and get it published, you have to have ten days, not, uh, not less than ten nor more than twenty, and I was thinking four and ten when I first looked at it, so, I would like to change it to June third, since you're not having a meeting on, um, May twenty-seventh, which is fine, June third will be okay, at eight thirty-five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the public hearing until eight thirty-five on June third.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carried.
You might want to hand your box in there there.
Yeah. We'll get this erased out of the book so we know what's going on. Alright, committee report.
Uh, I had no official extracurricular meetings last week.
Uh, Thursday morning, I had a Humboldt County development at Bank Iowa, and that was the only thing I had this last week.
Wednesday, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one other thing I forgot, I think it was, uh, Tuesday, and what, for Ben, Luke boats up to the landfill, and we looked at issues we got going on out there, Humboldt County landfill. Um, the farmer out there wants to fix some tile when it goes through the driveway, and that way, when he does it, it'll shut, shut it down for a day because the city's whole brush out there, so, I just told him, he'll have to notify the cities, and he's going to do it.
And he did get in touch, uh, with him, I told him to call you?
Yeah, yeah.
You got that?
It isn't finalized yet, but I've been out with Ben, looked it over, and Ben's fine with it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, on Wednesday, we had the mobile food pantry, uh, down at Fairgrounds, kind of a wet, cool night, but they still ended up with ninety-five families, two hundred and seventy-three individuals partook. Um, I think it was one of them deals that it started out, it was going to be slow, and I didn't know where we were going to go with all the food, because it was a, they had a lot of meat, and then, um, all of a sudden, people started showing up, and we got rid of, I think, they were down to like four bags of rice by the time it was over, so, they ended up getting, with that many people, they served a lot of people. And I think, um, dealing with, uh, the ladies upstairs from Ud Mill that are, have been handling the food pantry, they're doing a fantastic job of, of coordinating out there, they've changed the hours for the Thursday, um, instead of morning, they're doing it in the afternoon, so, they're, they seem to be doing a lot more numbers, so, give them a little pat on the back that things are going well with the food pantry, and that's all I had.
And I did not have any meetings.
Only thing I had was the mobile food truck on Wednesday.
That was out Webster County, that's why we have a way budget.
I saw that in the paper.
We get other weekends, we're media all the time, so...
I think that's a indication...
Have you got anything for us?
Um, yes, I do.
Serving?
Do you think it's...
NACO has sent their annual letter on, uh, credentials for the NACO conference coming up, so, um, I think normally you designate whatever supervisor's going, and Rick's going, and Sandy's going, so, we can do, one's the designated delegate, and the other one is the alternate then, so... So, however you want to...
Shall I?
Yep, so, it doesn't take a motion, I just need you to tell me who, whose name you want to go in which blank, there has to be one delegate and then a alternate.
And you find, and you find with Rick being the delegate?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll be the alternate.
I know you want to be the alternate, but you're going to be the delegate.
Well, just to let you know that Rick Rasmussen will be there. He'll keep you in line.
Okay, I will get that filled out and sent in, um, I'm not sure if you guys know Vicki Hinder shot with DHS, she's done with them for quite a few years, uh, we used to have Rita come, and she did the quarterly, um, what was called an LAE report, and she went through and pulled out like what we paid the custodian and any repairs to the courthouse and different things, and then that went through a process, and it was allocated based on their space here, and then they paid the county back for their space downstairs. Um, when Rita retired, they are down to just really bare staff at DHS in the office part, um, the gentleman called me one day who was in charge, and he asked if we would do that for them instead of having Rita, and I said, I don't know what to look for, and then it's, you're spending your time going back through all the claims, making copies of claims, scanning them in, sending them to them, um, filling out their report, I said, we just don't have time, I mean, we are strapped for time right now. So, I said, you know, you are welcome to our, our books anytime you want to, you can come out and go through the stuff like Rita did, but we are not going to dedicate one person to do that for you.
No.
So, um, then Vicki called, and she said they were still in, in a real tight situation and just couldn't spare having somebody come up here, and she said she figured it out, and for the quarterly reports that they do, it would generate about five hundred dollars a year for the county. And she wondered if it was even worth it for the board, I mean, would you be willing to forego that five hundred dollars if they didn't send somebody up here to do those reports? So, I said, I could ask you, I said, it's not up to me, it's up to you guys. And they do have two rooms downstairs, I think they still have two rooms, Vicki thought they just had one, but I said to her, maybe it's a possibility too, that for, in exchange of that, you could give up one of those rooms. Because we're always looking for one room, you know, we've got people that come through the courthouse, and they're here just for the day, and they need someplace just to sit with their computer and be able to do some work, and we have nowhere to put them. So, and I don't like putting them in the DHS room, because that's their office, I don't know what they...
Right.
I think they take all the private stuff with them, but still, that's their office, and they're paying money, whereas some of the other offices aren't, so, um, I told her, maybe that was another option too, was to...
That would be a good option.
We get this one, and we'll, we'll take this one, and then we'll... But I didn't know if you were okay to give up the five hundred dollars we possibly could get from them leasing that space. And if not, then they'll have to figure out something else.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fine trade-off.
Okay.
I'd argue.
I would agree.
No, person hours, if you did take that on, it's going to far exceed five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, for us to fill out all that paperwork, I'm glad you said no.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you could, you were trying to...
But I watched Rita when she put them together, and she was here a good half a day.
Yes.
Going through our files, trying to find all the things she could claim, if you could get money back, and she knew what to look for.
Yeah, it makes a big difference, when you're not for sure what to look for.
Yeah.
Not fun, yeah.
I think that Rick said that's pretty fair, so, they have two rooms, you said now?
Yes.
So, we can at least have one?
Yep.
And that would be nice for the extracurricular people that come in.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's very fair, if they're agreeable?
Right, not a very good room either.
No, but a lot of times, all they need is just a desk. We had a gal come through last week, and she normally uses the juvenile office downstairs, but the juvenile gal was there.
Sure.
She said, can I use the DHS office, and we were hesitant, but there was nowhere else, she said, I just need a desk, I've got my computer, it's already, you know, they have those cards with the internet on and all that stuff, she said, I just need to do some work, and I don't have anywhere to sit and do it, so...
Good fellow.
Okay, I will let her know that then. Um, the other thing was, um, I did call Renee, and she was asking what our questions were, and I couldn't remember, I knew it was the cost had something to do with it, I told her we thought the cost was a little high, but I couldn't remember if there were any other questions that she had, she said she'd be happy to get on the phone with you guys if you wanted to, or, and answer any questions, that was on her proposal to help update the county employee handbook, so...
I talked to her last week also.
Oh, did you, okay. Maybe you answered some of her questions.
Answered some of them, and she would like to come in sometime in the next couple of weeks and talk with us, and she said the employee handbooks are outdated, the FMLA is changed, the laws have changed on it, and there's a lot of stuff in our handbook that needs to be gone over, so...
She would be willing to come and...
Yeah, she would be willing to come and help us out fairly.
Have a little work session with her.
Yeah. So, whenever we can set that up, or when she...
Well, we do have a committee that, that should be in on this also, so, after you guys meet with her, then we should probably have a committee meet with her and, um, see what her plans are, so they are all up to date on what's going on.
Yeah, she said quite a few of the laws have changed on them, and ours is outdated, so...
Yeah, and I think next year's when we do the, renew the contract.
Yeah, start on them, yeah.
It'd be good to go.
Get it updated now.
Yeah, and get up to speed.
And she said she was going to call you and see, see what she could get on the agenda or what, she could meet with us, so...
Okay, sounds good. I think that's all I got.
I have one other reminder, in case you're bored on Friday, three to five-thirty, the open house for the CFR down in Humboldt.
I've got that in my book.
Got to go loud.
Should be quite a...
Three to five-thirty?
Three to five-thirty, yes. And it's open, get to walk through it, um, it'll be one of the few times unless, you know, someone is a client, that it'll have public access for...
Kind of, you would enjoy walking through it next time, but it won't...
I wouldn't do it more than the open house at other times.
So, if you have an opportunity, you can go look at it, see what it's, I'm looking forward to going down and seeing it, I walked through it when they were still putting the drywall up, and yeah, so, it's going, it'll be nice.
It'll be a good facility.
It is, so, that's all I have.
Anybody got anything else?
Man, oh man, oh man.
Pretty well covered. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poles, carried.